Good evening. I would like to call this meeting of the Southbridge School Committee to order at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 10th in council chambers. We'll go ahead and do roll call. Brittany Davison.
Present.
Carla De La Cruz-Davila.
Present.
Frank Kepinski is excused. Kathy LaPrière.
Present.
John Shaw.
Present.
Martina Shea.
Present.
And Andrew Murch. We have a quorum. Agenda item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will go ahead and move on to agenda item number three, review and approve minutes from the August 26th meeting. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So will.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All of those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous of all present. We'll move on to agenda item number three, Citizens Forum. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to the school committee in regards to something not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move to agenda item number five, Chairman's Announcements. Carla and I, as well as Town Council Chairman Scott Lozo, Vice Chairman Mike Montigny, and Town Council Jasmine Rivas alongside the Town Manager, met with Acting Commissioner Dr. Johnston and Dr. Valar, as well as Representative Marcy and Senator Fatman, and discussed plans moving forward with the expected action items. This evening, we will all meet our new consultant, Mr. Juan Rodriguez. Later on, he'll be discussing us moving forward through Phase One. All in all, I would say that it was a very successful meeting. Definitely have, it seems that the school committee and the town council have the same goal at the end of the day, as well as the Commissioner and Dr. Valar. We all want to get Southbridge in a position where the school committee can go ahead and continue operations as normal after we get through this expected action steps. And our intent is to go ahead and complete Phase One, hopefully by the end of the year. And we will also be meeting with the Commissioner, the Acting Commissioner again in December. So I look forward to making the progress, all of us making progress over the next three months. And I extremely look forward to the continued efforts with DESI, the district, and our town council contingency as well. Also, we would like to, I would, Dr. Valar and I would like to see members of the school committee going ahead and put their boots on the ground and going to visit the schools. I would encourage everybody to reach out to Dr. Valar. There are a few dates that are available, Monday, September 23rd, Wednesday, September 25th, Monday, September 30th, and Thursday, October 10th, just as some initial dates. So reach out to Dr. Valar's office and Ms. Judy, and you guys, we can go ahead and get these visits started, picking which school you want to go to. I would encourage no more than two members to go at one time. So as we, I hope by our next meeting, we've had, everybody's been able to pay a visit to at least one of the sites. Also, the U Inc. alongside Wellstorm Family Resource Center, Southbridge, and other organizations are going, are holding a resource fair at Henry Street Park on this Friday from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. There's, through the various organizations, there's different resources available for the community as a whole. There will also be activities, food, games, raffles. So please, if you have, if there's anybody that would like to participate within this event as a source, go ahead and email dteribio@sevenhills.org. Reach out to set up a table, and I would encourage everybody within town, if you are available at that time, go ahead and, it's a great way to, it's a great reason to get out to Henry Street and spend some time while the weather's still tolerable to do so. That will also conclude the Chairman's Announcements. I will go ahead and move on to agenda item number six, the introduction of Juan Rodriguez, the consultant with the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Thank you, Chair Murch. Good evening to all the members of the Southbridge School Committee. Thank you for placing me on your agenda tonight so I could introduce myself. I am currently working for DESI as consultant. One of my assignments will be to work with the Southbridge School Committee on the capacity building plan that you folks approved at the end of last school year. As Chair Murch mentioned, we had a very productive meeting last Friday with folks from DESI, Dr. Valar, and his Chief of Staff, several of you, Town Manager, and elected officials from both the town and the state delegation. The Commissioner was able to present and facilitate discussion on fall action steps based on the capacity building plan that was approved in the spring. These action steps are outlined in the document that you folks have a copy of. I will be reaching out to all of you for introductory conversations. I will be working very closely with Chair Murch, Vice Chair De La Cruz-Davila, and Dr. Valar on all these action steps that we have in front of us. I do believe that we are going to be able to accomplish all of these, hopefully by the December meeting, to be able, if we are able to complete them, to be able to start looking at Phase Two of the plan. Again, the outline that you have right now is just steps for Phase One. A little bit about myself, my most recent assignment was interim superintendent in Lawrence Public Schools. I worked for Lawrence Public Schools for 19 years as a middle school principal, high school principal, curriculum facilitator, assistant superintendent for family and welcoming services. Prior to that, I started my career in Lynn Public Schools as a bilingual education teacher in 1993. So I'm pleased to be out here working with all of you. I expect to see many of you at several points during the fall, early winter, as we do work on these action steps outlined in the document below.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Ms. Rodriguez? All right. As he reaches out, if you do have questions or anything like that, or beforehand, go ahead and email me, and I can reach out to him. Of course, as he makes contacts, once that contact's made, go ahead and reach out to him with any further questions or discussion. This is our, this is our game plan for the next three months, so I'm looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
We will go ahead and move on to agenda item number seven, Receiver's Annual Presentation on Opening of School.
Hopefully, Microsoft doesn't choose now as the time to update. Shouldn't be the case. Perfect. So it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Looking forward to this new beginning as we all are moving forward towards a common goal. I have put together a presentation this evening that I plan on covering, a quick update on where we are with the school budget from last year's closeout to funding levels for this year, touch on enrollment, talk about our goals towards meeting the expectations of the turnaround plan, speak to our instructional framework, how we plan on continuing to make progress, a staffing update, talk about some of the challenges, particularly school facilities. So as we look to the closeout from last fiscal year, that would be fiscal year '24, we closed the general fund budget, that's all local funds, with two cents being returned to the town of Southbridge. That's for the sixth consecutive year. I do attribute that to the magic of our business office, Seth Racine. I'm going to pause because I should have introduced folks that are with me this evening. So I have Dr. Williamson, Assistant Superintendent, who's here to help us this evening, Chief of Staff Judy Masonette, and Bill Metzger is the Executive Director of Business Administration and Human Resources. I appreciate their presence this evening as well. Mr. Metzger is transitioning in to assume a much larger role in the finance as we begin to shift away from the services of Open Architects, which is Seth Racine's company. And so, within a relatively near future, we're going to be more locally sustained in the business office. However, the magic that they have conducted over the years is a great deal of work. We were able, over last year, to obtain over $2 million of additional grant funding to support initiatives in the school district, which was actually up from over the year prior. We also were able to develop fiscal budget that's balanced for this school year, fiscal year '25, while only at net minimum school spending level. So that means we are at the lowest level allowed by state law to fund a public school system. Seventy-seven percent of the funding that Southbridge receives for schools is through Chapter 70 state support. One area that I definitely want to touch on around the budgets is that, and to remind folks, schools urgently need repair, renovation. The three elementary schools, and we need some decisions on how we're going to utilize space at Cole Ave. To put things in perspective, we had an elevator fail at West Street School this summer. It's going to be north of $100, $150,000 to repair this elevator because it is so old, the parts do not exist, and they are now engineering. And we're working with the town. We have funding that was identified in our budget cycle for capital repairs, thank goodness, but that's a huge portion of those funds that'll now be immediately sidelined for an elevator repair. Now luckily, that building does have a second elevator, although to access it, you need to be on a certain level. West Street is a strange design through the multiple renovations. So we're working around the absence of the first elevator. We've also had to repair pretty large sections of roofing at ERS and at Charlton Street School, where to make those repairs, there was also substantial masonry repair required. These things are going to continue to happen. I'm not trying to be alarmist, but I want to be realistic. There absolutely could be catastrophic failures at one of these buildings at any given day in this school year that could cause us to say, hmm, where are we going to have school? It's that serious. I'll reiterate later on in this presentation, but October 30th, we have a date set with the town council, there'll be, you'll all be invited, town council and school committee. We'll be hearing from Context Architecture. They're going to be speaking about potential solutions to these building problems. They've been studying this, there's actually a 600-page report that they've put together. Clearly, we'll have them summarize it, but you'll be able to learn about some potential solutions for addressing these significant building issues. Excuse me?
October 28th.
Oh, thank you. See, that's why I brought you. It's October 28th, be clear. October 28th. We'll make sure I didn't put 30th again later on. Enrollment. So enrollment has been going down for many years, but the last two years, we saw it start to increase. It appears, as we go into projections for this year, the official date is October 1, but as we're looking at enrollment, I check it every day, I actually updated this slide today, your slide says, I think, September 3rd. It appears that enrollment is going to hold fairly steady, but we do have an interesting phenomenon occurring at ERS, where they are up students. We posted for preschool teacher. We're monitoring class sizes in grade one and kindergarten. They definitely seem to have a surge of students at that level. We do not believe it's going to go down after October 1. Just for a point of clarity, October 1 is the date that the state uses to set all enrollment, and that enrollment, it is then used to calculate Chapter 70 funds, which then are sent out to schools later on in the fiscal cycle. So October 1 is a really important date. It gives schools an opportunity to work with other districts and families to determine, are these students really still supposed to be enrolled in our district? Often, people move, and they don't always tell you that they're moving. And so the numbers will shake out by October. As we look at the turnaround plan goals, the first, and these were all renewed in the last turnaround plan, and in that update, they set some ambitious goals for us. So the first is to increase the percentage of students reaching meeting expectations level in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. Full disclosure, I caught myself this morning, I had hoped that the 24-year data would be no longer embargoed. It's still embargoed, so I had to add these bars and actually cover the 24 results. But what I did get permission is to share, did we go up or go down as we're in our current score, so hopefully, within a matter of weeks, we can share the numbers. Fifty percent is a pretty rigorous goal, and as you can see, there are some pockets where we saw growth year over year, which is a good sign, and some of those growth, I would argue, are statistically significant. In other words, large enough that it's not described because it's just a different set of kids being tested in a different year, because that, you don't want to get too excited about one percentage point changes here or there. But when you're looking at larger percentages, you can begin to think there might be directionality in your dataset, which means you might be making a difference. So we do have some areas that we want to watch in our middle school in particular. Another goal was to increase the annual mean student growth percentiles in ELA and math. So the state, because the MCAS is such a sophisticated assessment, they're able to measure student growth from year to year, and that starts in grade four. Grade three is the first year we assess students, but you need a years of assessment prior so you can begin to determine the percentage of growth. And that's really the value add that a district is adding. So how far do you push kids and stretch kids? I think it's really important to note that our middle school, again, is showing a lot of progress there. In this graph, you can see there's a lot of improvement in growth. At 10 percentage points is a significant amount, but we're definitely seeing that the results of our curriculum are showing that students are growing at rates higher than you might anticipate typically. You might recall, last year, our eighth grade math score for growth was in the top 10 in the state. It was a significant bounce in improvement. Another goal was to increase the percentage of English language learners making progress towards English proficiency annually to 50%. Our progress here is not very strong. As you can see, we, the lower chart, there's an arrow, grade two, that's a grade level where we have met the goal. We're close in grade one, and then it falls off as kids get older. One of the things that's really stymying progress is the inability to hire licensed ESL teachers, very difficult. We have had turnover in the office of ESL in the district. So we have applied my, you might recall, Dr. Ortiz stepped in to help us with that. He's the most experienced person in our district with dual language in ESL. He's been a principal in dual language and ESL programming at every level, K through 12. So he's helping us address some of these deficiencies, but it is an area where we have to do better, and it's going to make an impact not only on this goal, but on previous goals, because we have enough percentage of students that if we can improve their performance in English fluency, will improve their performance in other areas as well. Reducing chronic absenteeism to a rate to 15%. You can see here that year over year, we've made progress in our elementary schools and in our middle school. West Street actually stayed somewhat the same. The high school and Southbridge Academy continue to follow the state and national trends and have significant issues with chronic attendance and chronic absenteeism. Last year at the high school, we made a policy change and tied student graduation credit earning to being in school, which is not actually all that radical. It's a pretty normal policy across the Commonwealth and other states, but it hadn't been one here. So theoretically, prior to last year, you could miss 40 days of school and graduate with a diploma, earning full credits in all your classes. Last year, we tied your attendance to earning credit. Will it make a difference? We're still analyzing to see, and we'll see in the next couple of years if it changes the mindset of high school attendance. I would tell you that it's only a small piece in a very large puzzle. It's certainly not going to be any magic solution, but it may help some kids across the finish line for sure. If you look at our actual attendance rates, again, year over year, we saw improvement in all schools in daily attendance. There's a lot of work that has been put in place for schools to reach out to families when students aren't attending. And a few years back, we went through those policies and procedures, and we changed the tone, first and foremost, of that outreach, beginning with, instead of, hey, your kid's not in school, that's the law, you have to be in school, it was, we noticed you're not in school, how can we help you? What are the problems? What are the barriers? And that engaged far more families in more positive conversations. So we do think that is helping. It is making a difference. We now require schools to document all that outreach. We then have procedures in place where, after so many absences, there are a series of interventions that are required, first and foremost, with a lens of how to be helpful. Certainly, as we progress, we are obligated under law to require kids to come to school, and we are obligated to make reports and follow through, including when necessary, involving DCF and the court systems. But it's first and foremost about support, and it is leading to some improvement. So we think that that's worth the time and effort. Every school has attendance teams, and every week, those attendance teams meet and troubleshoot on student attendance. It's a very important goal for us. That said, high school remains, be a pretty tricket-wicket post-pandemic for most school Next goal, increase four-year graduation rate for students with disabilities to 75%. This graph shows you that rate historically, because I thought that was interesting to put this in context. So first and foremost, our most recent data is for school year '23, and you can see the gap of to where we need to be from where we are is 34.9 percentage points. So it's a big gap. When we look historically, this has been an issue. Going back, and this dataset goes back to 2012, it was roughly 64%. So only in 2019 did we get close to hitting the 75%. In 2019, we were at 70%. This is another area where we are really struggling to hire licensed special education teachers. Now, we've gotten creative. We've hired back folks who've retired. We were lucky during the years post-pandemic, for several years, we were able to get folks who were retired to be able to work full-time with no penalty on their retirement. That is gone, so now we have to be a little more creative. We have worked to help EAs become licensed teachers. We're trying to find different ways to provide services to students, but that is a significant problem. Now, I'm married to a special educator who gets job offers on a daily basis. It is a pretty significant shortage across our profession, and it is a problem. Juan and I were actually just talking about the departments trying to do something about that as well. What we're seeing is there's a dramatic drop in people becoming teachers, period. And then you add in the difficulties of special education, and it's even harder. But that, this goal's going to be another one where we have a lot of work to do, and it's very difficult. On graduation, I figured, folks, hey, what happened with graduation last year? So we had about 100, we had 115 students graduate from the high school. Out of that 115, 18 earned credits, certificates of attainment, means they did not earn a high school diploma. There are post-graduation plans, 43 students planned on going to a two-year school, 31 to a four-year school, eight to trade school, 33 to post-high school employment. Of course, that were the plans, and plans, I'm sure, change. Again, just to give you context on our high school graduation rates, this chart goes back to 2012. We were about 72% in 2023. I suspect when we have our final data for 2024, we're going to be in that ballpark. I don't expect a dramatic increase as of yet, but as you can see in this chart, we've been, in the post-pandemic years, as low as the high 50s, and our highest year might be 2017, where we just about hit 80%. So this is another area where there's a lot of work to be done to make sure we can improve the number of students graduating within four years. So how are we getting at that work? Because those are pretty broad goals of significant measures, but to achieve that work in a system, understanding change theory, understanding the capacity that people have for learning and doing things differently, we try to select, over the years, high-leverage strategies, things that impact a lot of your organization, right? Something that you can work at, do very well, and make a big difference. Curriculum instruction, clearly articulated curriculum is a significant part of this. Using research-based instructional methods, super important. Utilizing data about instruction, so data about what adults are doing, and then its impact on student learning, and then we believe meeting the needs of social-emotional learners or students, all kind of come together into an important framework that we refer to as our Southbridge Public Schools instructional framework. And that really is bookended in the sense that it depends on the Massachusetts Framework for Teaching, and it depends on the Massachusetts Curricular Frameworks. And when you look at the teacher's frameworks, it talks about curriculum, planning, assessment, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And in the curricular frameworks, really speak to a roadmap of what students are supposed to know and be able to do, and the pedagogy important, or the teaching stuff that's important to get kids there, kind of all mixed together. And so what would that look like in a classroom? If we do all these things well, if you look, by the way, at those frameworks, they're pretty lengthy, and so anyone who thinks it's easy to be a teacher doesn't understand the complexity of the work we're asking them to do. But when we walk into classrooms, and a team here, and we're in classrooms every week, I did a tour today of the high school, yesterday of the middle school, scheduled for tours of Charlton, West Street, ERS this week, every week we go in, what we want to see is curriculum that's implemented with fidelity. And what do we mean by that? Well, we mean that you need to follow the curriculum as it's been written and laid out, because it's important that if you teach kindergarten, that everyone who goes to kindergarten gets the same content and same skills that are taught to them. What we don't want is an independent contractor in kindergarten picking and choosing which skills kids should learn, because when those kids go to first grade, that first-grade teacher needs to know that the kindergarten teacher covered certain materials. So curriculum in one way is a promise from one teacher to another, like, hey, we're going to cover these things, kids are going to learn this stuff, they're going to be ready for your class. A quick aside, I was at West Street School last week, a second-grade teacher said to me, I don't know what's happening at ERS, but these kids are best prepared I've ever seen. And later on, you'll see our ERS data, the curriculum's working, and the instruction is making a difference. So we want to see teachers following that curriculum, using the instructional strategies that we're training them. We want to see evidence that their lessons are really prepared, carefully developed, that their materials are prepared ahead of time. Instruction has to utilize best practices, the pedagogy, or the skills, the strategies that we know make a difference. There's enough educational research that we know certain things actually work very well, and we know certain things we might like, but they actually don't help learning. And so we have to make sure we use our time wisely and focus on best practices. So we want to make sure lessons are designed for every kid in every classroom. That's called differentiated, to make sure we're hitting and making their needs, meeting their needs. Questions have to be carefully prepared. You can't wing it and be a good teacher. It's just not possible. So we expect that teachers are fully planned, and they're adapting their lessons for kids that are in front of them. And classrooms have to be predominantly positive. So we actually look for praise-to-correction ratio of five to one. We are working hard to teach our teachers how to provide what we call behavior-specific praise, so kids understand what you want them to do and why what they did is a good thing, and that is baked into our instruction. So when you go on tours, you will see these things in practice, and it might become a little clearer to you what it actually means when you see it, for sure. We have long been focused on the social-emotional needs of our students. I think this foundation was set before the pandemic, and boy, I was glad that we had invested and began developing those skill sets prior to the pandemic, because post-pandemic, everyone's trying to catch up on these things, and we do have a lot of resources in place. So K5, we use Second Step Social-Emotional Learning Curriculum for all of our students. We have formed a partnership with a group called Cartwheel. They provide remote counseling for our families, for our students. They do it They do it from home. We can have it arranged at school. They provide psychiatric services, which are very difficult to secure for children, to be quite honest. We have invested in staffing of adjustment counselors, BCBAs, or Board Certified Behavior Analyst. We have ABAs, or Applied Behavior Analyst, guidance councils across our district. We're really proud of the initiative with Clark University, the Southbridge Cares Initiative. That's a grant that's promising up to two million dollars for the district in support of this particular project. They launched today was the first lessons up at our high school for our freshmen. So some Clark students were working with the leaders from Clark, and I know Dr. Williamson was there, but teaching the MAX curriculum, which again is a social-emotional curriculum adapted for high school students. There's plans for an application, the My Piece mobile app that helps interact with kids around mental health, which is really exciting. And then there are plans to create the Sensory Immersion Room, which is to help de-escalate students. It's all pretty cutting-edge. It's very exciting, and these are plans that we've been working on for over a year. Dr. Williamson led this work, and we're super excited how that's going to help transform our high school environment. And then another initiative this year that's new is the Bright Programming. So we received significant funding, around eight hundred thousand dollars of funds to staff what we call Bright Rooms at West Street, Charlton Street, and the middle school. And these programming is really designed to help facilitate children who might be coming back into the school system, transitioning from a period of hospitalization. And it's unfortunate, but the reality is we every year have a fairly significant number of kids who have some time, often due to mental health, in partial hospitalization programs or full hospitalization programs. And so their education is disrupted, and we need a way to be able to help them come back into school, hit the ground running in an emotionally appropriate way. Programming also can be helpful for kids in our schools that need some flexible time during the day. So it's a project that we're excited that we'll be able to pilot this year and get up and running. Transitioning a little bit to school leadership. I color-coded this slide in a sense, so all the names that are in blue are people that were here last year. The names that are in black are new, and I'm highlighting that because we have reached a point where there is stability in the leadership teams across the schools. And there's a point where we're beginning to have internal promotions across the schools. That's a good sign of healthy leadership, which is an important component of our stabilization of the schools and a stabilization of our teacher roles as well. The big changes this year, we did hire a new principal for Charlton Street School. Abduladande joins us. He had been a principal in Providence, Rhode Island, and prior to that, worked in Worcester. And then we also have Adam Bender joining us as assistant principal at West Street School. He had been assistant principal in Connecticut. Although now we had internal promotion, Marilyn Stella was the associate principal at West Street, and she's now the principal. And we had Stefania Doucette, who had been the associate principal at the high school, taking over Dr. Ortiz's role at the high school. So it's exciting that we have the stabilization of this team, and now each of these schools were able to plan all summer and hit the ground running with unified leadership. We did spend some time this summer making sure that our leadership understood our district priorities and goals. We have basically a retreat, it's two days of meetings at the high school, sounds fancier than it is. But we did review our performance data with the leadership team, speak to our strengths, our weaknesses, the strategies that we're implementing to improve outcomes. We provided them specific training on teacher evaluation, legal updates, which are significant, there are major changes to Title IX this year, for example. And so every year, we have to update that team so they understand the legal environment in which they're operating. Always review, update our multi-hazard plans, which are how we respond to crises in our schools. Training on Aspen, which is a student information management system, and the 504 management process. Student Support Center training, which is one of our strategies in establishing a safe school environment. And then updates from Human Resources on all the different human resource-based legal trainings that are required. So they got a large dose of information. What I wanted to share about leadership is through our own data and our own analysis, we were able to see a strong link between effective leadership in schools and good outcomes. What we have begun to do at our elementary level in partnership with Hill for Literacy is use a particular evaluation format, providing teachers with real-time coaching, but requiring administrators to actually conduct regular, frequent observation and feedback of instruction. So in this table, you'll see ERS, for example, provided two hundred and eighty observations of twenty staff members on an average of forty minutes. So their ratio of observation to staff member was nine point two-nine, which is very high. Charlton had a low ratio at seven point five-two, and it was admittedly our most disrupted school last year. And then West Street School, two hundred and fifty observations, twenty-seven staff, at sixty minutes, for nine point two-five was the ratio. So, okay, so you're looking at that, what's that mean? Well, it's interesting because there's a relationship between constant supervision and feedback, and not just you're doing this wrong. That's not helpful. What are you good at? What are we seeing that's strong? And how can we help you improve in a specific type of teaching or specific scenario? And these data here on these charts are from our I Ready assessments. I Ready can assess us in English Language Arts and in Mathematics. We use it K through five for both subject areas, the middle school last year only utilized it in Mathematics. This year, they are adopting it for ELA as well. These quadrants are important. So the lower left, that shows you low growth and low performance. The lower right shows you high performance, low growth. Then you go to the upper left, you're going to have higher growth, but low performance. And then the upper right, the high performance, high growth. And what we're seeing is our schools have moved from the low performance, low growth into high growth, and some of them are moving now laterally towards higher performance as well. And that's obviously what you want to see happening, is you want to see year over year, the data increasing and moving us ideally to the upper right-hand quadrant, which would be phenomenal. But you can see here, ERS doing much better in their English Language Arts, their reading score. West Street really grew quite a bit, and Charlton Street, as I announced, has a new leadership team, and there's a reason for that. The results are not acceptable. It's really the bottom line. When we look at Mathematics, you can see the middle school and students at Southbridge Academy, who were also middle school students, they popped their growth significantly. It went very high. ERS, up, and more importantly for ERS, it's the closest towards the high performance. It's moving in that direction. And then West Street, again, also started moving to that quadrant. So these are encouraging data. When we break down, I Ready can allow you to look at annual growth, and it can look at a score called stretch growth. Stretch growth is a statistically created score that is a very ambitious goal, that if you can get kids to that achievement level, you're closing learning gaps. They're learning more than a year's content, and it's designed so that within a few school years, they can be caught up. I Ready Assessment's own internal studies would tell you, if you could get a twenty-five to a thirty growth score, that's pretty impressive. A forty is very difficult. And what we can see here is that we have at ERS, particularly Grade One, I should make this bigger for my old eyes, you have a hundred and twenty-four percent is the median score for progress in annual growth. To keep it simple, that's a lot of kids are making a year's growth or more than a year's growth. Overall, sixty-six percent of all the kids in that grade level made a year's growth. Some made more, significantly more. And then forty percent met stretch growth. So when you break that data set apart, there's a whole chunk of kids that grew a lot. There are still some kids who did not, and those are kids that we have to figure out, like, what other services can we provide? Because that's where the learning gap starts for us. It's the first time we record it, is in kindergarten. But it's really important to embrace the fact that they got ninety-one percent of their kids, or ninety-one percentile score is nearly hitting stretch growth. So forty percent of the kids did. It's quite, quite an accomplishment. And in Grade One, it's very similar. They had also, in reading, accomplished the same thing. When we look at math, forty-seven percent of our kindergartners made stretch growth in math. It is a solid curriculum that we're using. As you can see, sixty-one percent of all kids made a year's growth, and there's a whole chunk of kids that made more than a year's growth. So what's really important behind this is that our teachers and our principals are watching every kid and saying, where did you start? Where did you end? Did you make a year's progress? Did you make a year and a half? Some kids make two years' progress. And we have pretty granular data on who's not, and then begin to lie. And then that's why you have multi-tiered systems of support. What else do we need? Because we want to close the gap in the first two grades of school, for sure. When we look at the, should I move that ahead? This here, I Ready from the middle school, can also show you forty percent growth in Grade Eight, seventy-one percent of those kids made a year's growth. But if you look at the median score, a hundred and eighty-six percent. So that means there's a whole bunch of kids in that distribution that are growing beyond a year. Now, there's also a tail end, a group of kids in that distribution who did not, but there's a whole bunch more on the growth side. So these just show that there's a massively positive impact happening in the learning in these data set. So it's encouraging. When you line up these data sets that we're looking at here with what they had historically seen on the MCAS that I talked about a little while ago, eighth grade also had that huge growth score on the state test. So there's a relationship we're seeing, and I Ready does run its own correlations with the state test, but these scores are strongly related to improvements on the mastery tests. So it's important. So these are good news. Like, the curriculum is making a difference, the instruction's making a difference, and a lot of kids are learning at very, very high levels. I mentioned I go into schools every week, and members of my team and leadership team joins me often, and we collect classroom management observation data. It's called the CMOT. It was developed by the University of Connecticut. The researchers validated this measure. We've been using it for at least five years, and it helps us see the direction of climate in our classrooms. And so with it, we look at active supervision, is the teacher actively supervising the class? Opportunities to respond, are they providing students with opportunities to engage in the lesson and respond to questions and be part of the lesson actively? Behavior-specific praise, so are they providing students with regular behavior-specific praise? And then we look at the ratio of positive praise to correction. To be clear, correction is necessary if you're a teacher in a classroom. We cannot let poor behavior not be corrected, but we are striving for positive classrooms. So we collect that data electronically throughout our visits, and then it's analyzed throughout the year. And so this table looks at schools over the course of a year. It's important to note, it's a four-point scale, and so, you know, variance on this can look dramatic visually and not be a significant change in the score, so I don't want to oversell anything. When I look at these data, what I look for is trends. What direction are the data heading in? Are they going up? Are they going down? Because then we start to see relationships between other assessment data and whether or not the school is doing well on the CMOT. As you can see, I put the positive indicator on the schools that were trending up and the negative indicators on the schools that were not. And on this particular graph, you can see real strong growth at ERS, and the middle school in particular, it jumps out at you. But also, really interesting to see how the high school took a positive turn over the course of last year. So that's good news. Post-pandemic, both at Charlton Street, which was easier for us to explain, and at West Street, which was less easy for us to explain, the data were trending downward. Another part of that data collection around climate and culture that's super important to us is we survey students, teachers, and families twice a year. And so this is an example of our middle school rolled-up data from one of our data dashboards. I used it and picked it purposely because it really can show a clear trend of improvement. It jumps out at you. I did include in the back of your packets, these data for all the schools, so that they're all there. As you get to the end, you'll see additional information, there are other pages, but I knew I was going to talk a lot, and I didn't want to go all night. So this page here, though, gives you a really good picture of a school that we're really proud of the improvement, and you can see the data speaks to it. And there are sub-scores here that you can look at that talk about the different components and how we measure overall staff's view and students' view of the climate. And it's analyzed also by our PBIS teams at each school, so they can look at, like, what can we do to improve these scores? A four-point scale, so anything around three is pretty darn good. And you can see the middle school, most of that is over three. Another portion of that survey, though, is the families. And so here are two examples of family surveys. You have Eastford Road, and you have the middle school. I will point out that we often, when we look at surveys, we look at the N, the number of respondents. You can see there's a lot more participation in surveys with the younger families. That's pretty typical in my experience. But all of them are enough results, enough participants, that make the results statistically significant, so we can use these data. But again, surveying parents is very important for our schools, our leaders and teams, to see what they feel about the schools. And so these data have been collected for quite some time. As you look at the charts, the bars are, the first bar would be the first iteration of the test, followed by, so it'd be fall, followed by spring, and next fall, the next spring, just so as you're trying to make sense out of that. But a lot of very good climate data showing some progress in those schools, for sure. Parent councils, so it is not only law that schools have parent councils, we want to have parent councils, but honestly, to get them, you need to have healthy schools where parents' time is worthwhile, that the staff's not turning over, that it's not chaos. And the good news here is we have organically sprung some pretty strong parent councils that are starting to really take hold. Again, middle school is our success story. They're at least in year two. Our high school is having their first meeting for a group of fifteen parents who are interested in meeting with their principal tomorrow night. So I feel very strongly and confident that they'll be launching, so that's great news. West Street doesn't have a council that's operating, but they have parents sitting on their school-wide Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports Team. And ERS and Charlton Street are both trying to organize at the moment. What I've learned is it's really critically important that this is organic at the building. I would be, I would expect that ERS should be able to accomplish this, as the middle school has. They have made phenomenal improvements, and Charlton will then be able to follow through. So these are things that we think are really important. They have been lagging for some time. I think a couple of years of the pandemic didn't help, but I want to say the most important piece, and it's a theme I'm trying to make tonight, it's leadership. You have to have stable leaders at the buildings for these things to thrive, because they set up, they set the table for the whole thing. If they're not there, they're not engaged, it can't work. So that brings us to staff, because I believe there's a strong connection between the school leadership and the retention of staff, for sure. So over this summer, we've hired forty-six teachers, twelve EAs, six substitutes, one elementary principal, assistant principal, three BCBAs, a student success coordinator manager that's at the middle school, and three ABA techs. So it was a very busy hiring season. So it was a very busy hiring season, not the busiest we've had by any means, but definitely busy. And I want to thank the HR department and our staff and HR because they've done a phenomenal job onboarding those folks and working with the town side. Because the town also, whenever we hire someone, we have to work with the town side on HR in the sense that there's benefits, health insurance, a whole bunch of onboarding happens behind the scenes that folks don't realize. So that partnership is very important. Bill and his team have done a great job of forging some partnerships and that happened very smoothly this summer. When we look at staff retention, I tried to put a lot of data on this slide for you. It breaks down all kinds of job categories and it gives you information from 2020 to 2023. Our dashboard will be updated to include the 2024 data, hopefully rather soon. That's up to the vendor who supports us on that. But our current instructional staff retention rate is sixty-nine point two percent as reported to the department. And that has fluctuated over time. It's certainly not our highest, which is around seventy-seven, I think it was in 2021. Seems to be somewhat in par. What I think is most important to point out as we hear about our teacher training and the need for supervision and the need for feedback and all these people doing this work, we have sixty-seven percent of the staff, based on the 2023 data, were less than three years' experience. And we just added forty-two new folks. So the point being is we have a very, very new teaching staff. And if you look at, on the right-hand side, you should see that, of course, it didn't turn on the laser pointer. And this chart here, active staff, you can see in this table, this data set, one hundred and thirty-nine first-year folks, seventy-four, actually less than one year, seventy-four with one year completed, seventy-one with two to three years, twenty-one-year veterans, ten. Right, so that is one of the many reasons why we need to provide lots of feedback to folks is we don't have a situation where you have five first-grade teachers who've been teaching for fifteen years and you add a sixth teacher who's brand new and those five could, hey, we'll help you out. Now, you pretty much have everybody who's new and you're supporting everybody to make sure everybody is teaching in the best way, most efficient way possible. So it's super important. Just again, to put it in context, our retention data in 2023, we had fifty-nine percent. Twenty-twenty-two, we're at sixty-five point eight. Twenty-twenty-one, we're at seventy-seven. So we've been kind of up and down. There's another cycle that occurs, which is we have three years with any new teacher to decide whether or not we want them to stay with us and be granted tenure, right? Become a tenured teacher. Teachers with permanent teaching status, as it's referred to in Massachusetts law, then have much higher protection of their employment. And so we have to be sure that anyone who is going to stay is really good. And you only get three years, unfortunately, to make that decision. And that's hard because we know it takes five to seven years to become a really good teacher. Like there's plenty of research that tells us that. So you, you got to make a good educated determination. Do we want to keep this person or do we need someone who fits better? And so there's a cycle in the data where you'll see these peaks. And that's because you got a cohort came in and now you got to make a decision. And it's a difficult decision. But settling could really impact your ability to help all kids learn at higher levels later on. So it, it's definitely a tricky cycle. Another important thing to us is our racial diversity. If you look to the right side of this slide, you'll see state data. And the, the big message here is the state average of Hispanic teachers, which obviously is the, our largest group of students, is four point one percent. In Southbridge, we're at fourteen percent. So we're near, more than three times the state average. And that's deliberate work. You can see over in this graph here in the bottom left, how our staff diversity has increased over time. That is intentional. We are trying to have our staff be more representative of our student body. It's difficult. Teaching is less popular of a profession than ever. And, you know, attracting minority teachers with Worcester right up the street, you know, we're always in a battle, right? For sure. But it is something that we are proud of the progress that we're making. And we definitely are leading the way when you're looking, compare us statewide. And actually, I did take a look at even Worcester's data. As big as Worcester is, with as large a number of Hispanic teachers that they have, they're at twelve percent. So we're actually beating them, right? Percentage-wise. So yeah, I'm a little competitive. So I think it's important to point out, again, HR does a great job, our recruitment fairs, people are working hard, and we try to build within. We have lots of EAs we've supported as they became teachers. Helping people become teachers is a super way to do it and we've been very successful with that. Our teachers get new teacher orientation. It's two weeks, basically, of orientation. Tons of topics are covered. We literally have them role-play classroom management. And initially, it's awkward. By the end of two weeks, it's not awkward. And then when you go into the classrooms after the first day of school, the people who were just doing a great job in practice are doing a great job in class. Like it, you do need to practice what you, how you react and your skill sets. But as you can see by this list, there's lots of content that teachers have to be taught ahead of time just to begin their journey becoming a teacher. So learning about all the information systems, the curricular systems, our classroom management expectations, there's a large list here of important content. So it does take the two weeks. And then we have every Wednesday, early dismissal, where we continue to work on this craft. And we have full PD days, three other days throughout the year where we work on that craft. If you're a new teacher, this is a great place to come if you want to get great training. The key is to keep them after they get all that great training. So that, that's the important work. But they certainly, and we've collected data and feedback on their training and largely they're very happy with how it went this year. Credit to Dr. Williamson and her staff for that hard work. We face some huge challenges. I mentioned some of them as we were going through these data. Teacher shortages, particularly in ESL, special education, have, have been hard to figure out and to solve. You're trying to be as creative as possible. We have a large student body of high-need students, so it's demanding. We need to have structures and systems that are supportive of our students and of our staff, like really important. I myself taught in a high-need school. I can tell you that it is emotionally exhausting. It's a lot of work. As we've seen, our local contribution go down. We have gotten some increases with the Student Opportunity Act, but our student needs have gone up dramatically. And that continues to be an issue. We are at the bare minimum funding levels allowable by state law and that needs to be recognized. Now, I've never been one to say it's all about money, but certainly making sure we maintain as we go into these future years, the resources necessary to keep programming in place. It's likely going to require some additional local dollars. There's only so many additional Student Opportunity Acts that I see on the horizon. I mentioned the shortages and the buildings. Buildings are in super, super, and I'm seeing here, I'm sorry, I got the wrong date. We'll have to fix that. Buildings need a lot of repair. There's no doubt about it. October twenty-eighth at six o'clock, we're going to hear from Context Architecture. They've studied the buildings extensively. They have some gross estimates of what it would cost with some proposed plans and how to address the various building issues. A quick, in a nutshell, buildings need so much work, we can't keep kids in them when they're repaired. And they're not going to get fixed in the summer. It's too much work. So how do you manage that? That's going to be part of the discussion. Like what strategies can be put in place? What may be order of repair or construction? Ultimately, end of the day, we reached out to the town because this is a town council issue, this is a town issue. On our side, the school committee's side, it's about, well, what does the education specification look like? What do we need the building for? How should it be designed to meet teaching and learning needs? That's school committee stuff. How much it costs, location and all that, it's going to be all, all your partners at the town. And so we're going to start that. Really appreciative of how quickly Jack and Chairman Lozow jumped on pulling this meeting together, so we know they're serious. So on October twenty-eighth, six o'clock, hopefully we'll start to hear some information. So with that, I know I was long, a lot of information, but I'm trying to frame the conversation that you all need to learn all these details about the schools. And so I'm going to try to continue to provide you with that information and hopefully our journey is a smooth one. So I'll pause and assume you might have a question or two.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Valar from the school committee?
I do. Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Valar. And in the presentation, you had mentioned a lot about, you know, staffing shortages, especially affecting the vulnerable populations of students with disabilities and ESL learners. So I'm curious as to like what the district's plan is to hire special education teachers and teacher retention in general for those students.
Well, you know, again, a good special education teacher, we have postings out all year long and we will hire one whenever anyone applies. We actually dig into School Spring and reverse engineer it. School Spring is a location where most teachers would put their resume on and apply to most schools across the Commonwealth. We have reached out and have a system where principals will reach out. Judy sent twelve or thirteen resumes over to Charlton the other day for a position. We dig for them. They may not have applied and we just mass email, for example, like thirty people, hey, want to come to Southbridge? We've produced a video at our middle school, recruitment video, and we attach it to the email, send it out. Sometimes it turns into a teacher that wants to come here and work here. I interviewed a lot of people this summer who are aligned with the mission, right? Like a lot of younger people are really into like, hey, I want to work in a school that's meeting the needs of, you know, diverse kids and I want the challenge and I want to make a difference. So those are exciting hires. We go to the fairs, we do all the traditional stuff. The, the, end of the day, it's like you're thirsty, you're in a desert, you're looking for water, there's no water. We have that problem. There's not that many folks that are coming into education. We have worked with universities, UMass Dartmouth, we provided classes for some of our EAs in particular to help them get licensed. We support folks who aren't licensed. We get them waivers and then we work on helping them get licensed. We have brought back retired folks, written to get permission to have them work even though they're retired. So we're trying all that we can do, but it's still a problem. Our special ed director is actually visiting another town that has some of its special ed education programming configured differently. And so we're going to look at, maybe we have to configure it differently so that we can continue to meet kids' needs best we can. But if I had an answer and I'd write a book and we'd be, I'd be retired, right? Because it is a real huge problem. You know, and, and we're looking to, will the state come up with some policy solutions? I know across the border, there are programs that allow teachers to get cross-endorsed very quickly at very low costs and some districts are just paying those costs. Can we do that? So the good news is we at least talked to the department. The bad news is no one solved this problem. We're just relentless. We need to have people meeting the kid, our kids' needs. And the final comment is we'll be creative. We hired someone who is a licensed teacher for ESL, excuse me, they're a licensed teacher, but not for ESL, but they're an ESL teacher. What are you doing? Well, isn't it better to have a licensed teacher that you then can work with to help deliver ESL than to hire some substitute that has no license and is not a teacher? We get the waiver for the licensed teacher in a different content area to at least work with students. So that has helped. You get a quality person that's educated, that understands teaching, they're just not a content expert. There's, there's no perfect solution to that problem.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Dr. Valar?
I have a couple of questions myself. On page twenty of the presentation, you talk, you discuss the, I believe it's the, the staff monitoring or the evaluation, impact of instructional leadership. You said that nine point two-nine and nine point two-five were high, but seven point five-two was low, which is why you changed leadership at Charlton Street. So where, where's the goal per your, where would you like to see this in particular if nine's too high and seven and a half's too low?
I guess the, the real thing, if you look in here, it's not only that there are a fewer number of observations, it's also a much shorter period of time in, in the classroom. So that, that, those teachers are not getting the level of support that they need. And that speaks to the other question about retention. Teachers need to be supported. Their work is really, really hard. And if they feel like you're just telling them what they're doing wrong and you're not helping them get better as a partner. And ironically, we piloted this at Charlton Street at the end of last year, a training cycle that really helped and got great feedback from them, but it was at the end of the year. So we need to be supportive and identify like how people are really good and then how can we help them get better in a way that makes them feel like they have an opportunity to grow, that you're not out to get them. So being in their classroom regularly is really important and then being able to provide very specific feedback about, yeah, you tried that and today it looks so much better. Look, let's look at the data and the data show, you know, I counted a frequency count as a data collection, like you did this twelve times and it had this impact. I can't give you a specific ratio, but I know there's a relationship to the more seems to have given us a better outcome. I suspect there is also a location where it's over the top and you're in there too much and now you're, you're stunting, you know, stunting growth. So there is a, a part here where principals have to have a relationship with the people in their building and it has to be a positive supportive one. This helps with accountability. We know what our principals are doing and we're also getting feedback from teachers in our surveys. So we want to create a strong supportive environment that also has urgency on outcomes. Right, like we, you know, I love Kelly Gialino at ERS tells her staff this, like she wants joy in her school, which I hundred percent agree, like that should be the most joyful place. It's a pre-K one school. But they also have to have urgency in the sense that there's no time to waste. It's the most important years in a kid's education. They have to be really good and they can't come into school unprepared once. And if you've ever taught, preparing is a lot of work, right? So you can never not do it. It's exhausting. But that's the kind of leadership we need, where they're pushing, 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 but supportive. That's what makes a difference. And we're seeing it here. You know, I don't want to oversell our progress, but it is pretty remarkable what ERS has been able to do in a few years with a really strong, positive leader that's reaching out to families, pushing teachers, supporting teachers. Kids are getting better outcomes.
And I know we, we have, you have the, the data, you have a test, an assessment that you give the kindergarteners, just to kind of give you a baseline, at least looking as far as growth goes. Is that track, and that, is that, that's the initial assessment? Like when you're going as far as monitoring growth in kindergarteners, is that the first time or are we doing it in the preschool to kind of give us that gauge?
Well, there, there are different types of age-appropriate assessments. When we look at literacy, we really begin to hone in on basic literacy skills using a test called the DIBELS. And we start that in kindergarten because many of those skills are like letter identification, preschool, that's less likely. There are some kids, but, and then it's the letter sound connection, then it's blending, it's, you know, basic, all the skills required for decoding. So DIBELS helps us measure that and it allows you to measure progress very quickly in discrete skills. So it's a super assessment for a very small set of information. We also use I Ready because that's a larger assessment that allows you to look, over time, it'll grow to reading comprehension, which is the goal, right? Reading to understand. But first, you got to break down the discrete skills, make sure kids can sound out words and then read words with fluency. And when they read words with fluency automated, so your brain's not working so hard, now you have brain power to understand what you're in. But then we run into, do you have the vocabulary to understand what you're read? Do you have the life experience to understand what you read? The language skills? So it gets complicated quickly, but DIBELS and I Ready are the two major assessments in pre-K one. I should say K one. In preschool, there are some In preschool, there are some inventories that you use. They're much less evasive, it's more play-based learning.
Right. And the reason why I ask that is because obviously, we have the pre-K program at ERS ourselves, but we also have Head Start that reaches, that uses space at CoLab. So, I was just looking, is there, is there a way that you guys are monitoring that progress, the success of the pre-K program, to make sure that it is either comparative or better than the student results that we're getting initially from the Head Start students that we have? Because I do know that a large plurality of students enrolled in CoLab's Head Start program are here from Southbridge. So, I was, didn't know if you had that.
Yeah, we, you know, at the end of the day, I actually have Kathleen Cottoret, who's working on outreach to the preschools and is supporting ERS's NIAC accreditation efforts. We do want to be supportive partners of Head Start. I certainly would hesitate to criticize any of the outcomes of Head Start, like they work really hard, they're a critical partner. So, what we'd like to be able to do, to be in a position, one, we got to take care of our own house, right? Like, we have enough work to do to improve our outcomes, and I'm not going over to Head Start and saying, hey, I think you need to be better at A, B, or C. But I'd love to be, and we're reaching out to be like their partner in NEPD offerings and curricular offerings. And so, Kathleen's work is to help find ways, not just Head Start, but also can we help family-based daycare centers to have preschool-age kids? Can we help somehow? Can we work with the why? There have been some grants that we didn't have the capacity in the past to look at, that we're now thinking, hey, is there a way that you partner with one of these two groups to improve preschool? Because if I had a time machine, and we're here on first day of receivership, preschool would be one of my number-one priorities. I spent a lot of my previous job lobbying in Connecticut for all increased universal access to preschool. I mean, it's one of the most impactful interventions in a child's education. And there's longitudinal studies that prove that over 20, 25 years, the outcomes of preschool are significant. So, you're right in thinking, like, how do you improve preschool? Because that improves the whole process. Just like, under my control, kindergarten, right? We're putting a lot of resources into ERS, because that's the right place for us to invest. We have the largest number of impactful kids at that age, so we can make a big difference.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions from the members? Are there any questions from members of the public for Dr. Valar regarding the presentation that was just given? If you would like to speak, if you could come up to the podium. For the record, please state your name and address.
Sure. Jasmine Rivas, 40 Rogers Street, Southbridge, Town Counselor. I have a couple of questions, and thank you so much for the presentation and the, you know, deep dive into some of the numbers and the data. On page 11, where you mentioned the turnaround plan goal for increasing the four-year graduation rate for students with disabilities, I was just curious about what are some of the strategies and additional supports that are being implemented to meet this goal over time? And then I have a couple more.
So, I'm going to go back to the presentation. We need to identify more licensed special education teachers if we're going to be really impactful in that goal. The overarching strategy is to improve curriculum instruction across the district, because all, majority of our kids are included in classrooms, and therefore, they need to have good access. Administering IEPs, super important, but hard to do if you don't have qualified special education teachers to deliver that specialized instruction. What happens in the absence of special education teachers? You end up having one special education teacher working with multiple educational assistants that you hire to help support that instruction in the classroom teacher. We would like to be able to make sure that you can individualize IEPs as specifically as possible. I remind everyone, special education law requires that you provide adequate services. Sometimes people want a Cadillac, but in reality, you have to give a Chevy. The law requires the Chevy. And so, it's like, do we outplace a student? Do we create our own home program? Do we increase the number of VAs, ABAs? If you look at the number of employees we have, we've increased all of those areas other than a special ed teacher, because they're not available. So, we have more BCBA's, more ABA techs, more EAs, even hire regular education teachers to work with that group. But again, as I said, it's going to be very difficult until someone cracks the nut of how we're going to get more special education teachers or completely change how public schools deliver special education. It's one or the other, and it's going to be a quagmire. I don't have a super solution to that. So, it's an inadequate answer, but it's the best one I got at this moment.
Thank you. Going to slide 19, and I appreciate where we talked about teacher support, which is extremely important. My question is around administrator support, and I appreciate the detailed outline of what trainings they're, they've received. I was curious around the student support centers training and whether, I think I asked this question last year, around training with the School Empowerment Network and certifying administrators in restorative practices. I was curious about how many administrators, if any, this year have been certified or in the process of being certified. And then, the second part of that training question, what training is planned for admin on the MAX program, the MyPEACE mobile application and the sensory immersion room? Just kind of, you know, making sure that teachers are supported and teachers are being trained, but admin, you know, also making sure that they know what's expected so that they can support teachers.
So, I think I said this last year, School Empowerment Network does not certify administrators in their curriculum, but Adam Parides is the consultant that we work with, and he continues to work with our schools in providing that service. We also have our own capacity internal now. Joe LaBarra has been working to train and make sure there's uniform practices across our student support centers in all of our elementary schools, middle schools, and secondary school, high school. So, they're working hard to make sure they have a uniform practice, and then analyzing the data of, well, how many times are kids being referred to this? How long are kids there? And what interventions are being put into place to break any cycles that are happening? So, there's a lot there. But there is no certification provided for that. I'm sorry, your second question was?
On the MAX?
Oh, yes, the Clark Grant. I don't know if there's a specific comment you have, Dr. Williamson?
So, the partnership with Clark University, for all three parts of the project, we have a steering committee. And so, included on that steering committee is administration from the high school. We have Mr. House, Director of Secondary Ed. Principal Doucette is part of that, as well as our entire counseling team is part of this steering committee, as well as myself and Dr. Valar. And this steering committee is guiding all of this work. So, they understand the curriculum, you know, like Dr. Valar mentioned earlier, we had our first lessons taught today by the Clark University students in collaboration with our school counselors and the Clark administrators, and members of our administration team were there for the lesson to observe it and see. You know, the administrator will be seeing these lessons, and then the Clark team, in collaboration with our administration, will be providing feedback to everyone who's teaching these lessons to the students. This is, that's the support structure for every piece of this project. So, as our counselors and our students are learning to use the app, our administrators are contributing to that work, and they're a part of understanding how that app works with students and counselors and communication. When we build the sensory immersion room, again, the administration will be deeply involved in the planning and design of the room, and then how the room is used with students and counselors when it's implemented. So, the, you know, the administrative team and, you know, and the counseling team is, they're all very well involved in all of this planning. We're only just in year one of this grant, so we've got four more years of planning, and with every year, it'll be a collaborative process with the administrators and the counselors.
Thank you. Just to go back to the School Empowerment Network, maybe they're not the trainers, but as I recall, when I was in the school system, I think there were, there was at least one administrator that was certified. He's no longer there, but maybe it was through a different agency, but just something to think about, because it's something really important in this, you know, in this structure that admin should get specific training, and not just being part of the process, but admin need training in all of these different areas as well for them, for their own development as lifelong learners. My other question was around the survey data and surveying parents. It was really hard to read those tiny numbers. But my question is, what are some things that the district is doing to increase, like the family participation in some of these surveys? Or maybe supplement getting, you know, family input, like maybe focus groups? I just think some of these numbers are pretty low, and although the data is helpful, I'd love to see some more responses or some more engagement in this area from families.
So, the schools work really hard at getting parents to complete surveys. We ask them to do it twice a year for like seven years. So, you can imagine there's also a survey fatigue that can set in. But our elementaries are particularly creative about having stations and iPads available or Chromebooks, and work hard to try to get families to complete those surveys twice a year. And we, they're successful enough to get a statistically accurate amount. So, while, and I'm not sure which ones are small, other than the secondary, which are maybe 20, 30 responses, still sufficient. Just ask the folks who are polling, right? That are trying to get all that polling answers, that are reaching out all the time. Using the tool, you need to get a certain sample so that you can use the data. If you don't get the right sample, then the survey is meaningless. And I find that surveys in particular are significantly abused, because people create their own, they don't understand the science behind surveys, they don't know how to validate a question, they don't do any of the statistics behind it, and then they think it's something that's meaningful. The survey here, at least, was generated by experts, and we're getting statistically significant responses. And the schools take it seriously. Each school's PBIS team looks at results. Dr. Williamson has led this work as well over the years in the district, and it is meaningful data to help schools improve. But like everything, tonight, we've talked about a lot of different things. I want to point out, you know, there are five principals, right? They're responsible for all those things, and they're supposed to do them all at a high level, and we provide all that training, and we're trying to improve their practice with high-need students and change. And honestly, their job is enough just to manage. Just managing the school on a daily basis is a lot of work, and we're trying to change what they do. So, there is, as much as there are a lot of really great ideas and what we could do more of and better of, we have to remain focused on these initiatives I've talked about, and we're trying to do them to the best of their ability, but they could always get better. There's no doubt about it. But I do think they've made good progress, getting surveys filled out, working on climate, we're improving parental involvement on a regular basis, and the data are tracking that. There are schools that are behind. They're obvious, and we're making changes and we're trying to get improvement. It's really the best I got on those. Thanks.
Thank you. I meant small, like in print. The print was very small to read. My last question, or two questions, are on slide 30 around teacher diversity. And I was curious about if you had any data on the retention rates for Hispanic teachers? And then also, my second question, what percentage of the EAs you mentioned have become teachers? And I was curious about the percentage of EAs that have become teachers in the last two years? If you have.
Yeah, I can be quick. I don't know those answers off the top of my head, so certainly, we can take a look at it and try to be responsive to it, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other members of the public that have any questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much for the detailed presentation. I look forward to our next one as we continue to move through the school year. We'll move on to agenda item number eight, discussion on progress, meeting expectations, outlining DESI plan to build school community capacity. Before I turn this over to members that would like to speak, just to make sure I outline this so that it's clear, this is, this was discussed and put on the agenda to give members an opportunity to be able to discuss what they have done, who they have met with, and what they have done within the community in accordance with the DESI Expected Action items that we voted on. I have, and again, I, you know, we want to make sure that the community is aware of your involvement and what you're doing and making that progress with these Expected Action steps. And if there is any other comments or statements that are made that are not with, lining in within these steps that we laid out, they will be gavelled down and your comments will be suspended. With that, as long as everybody's in understanding, I will go ahead and start with Vice Chair Davila. Do you have any update or progress meeting the expectation?
No, other than meeting with Valar, I have no other thing to discuss. Thank you.
All right. We'll go ahead. Member Davison?
Yes, thank you. So, I've met with Dr. Valar twice. First time was in June, when I first got elected, it's kind of like an introductory meeting. And then again, a few weeks ago with Vice Chair Carla. We talked about a lot of different things, specifically things in the DESI action plan and how we can come, make those happen, how we're going to move forward. We don't have a follow-up meeting scheduled yet, but I know the plan is to start touring the school, so I'll be reaching out to set that up. I have also emailed all the town council members. I speak with Councilor Rivas quite often. We do have a meeting set up with Councilor John Daniels next Monday, I believe. And then, obviously, we have the joint meeting coming up in October. And then Carla and I did put on a couple of community forums where we had some positive open discussions about a variety of different topics related to the school, which the community members and parents have appreciated. And that's all I have to update.
Thank you. Member Lapiori, do you have any?
Nothing at this time.
All right. All the way down to the other side of the day. Member Shaw, do you have anything?
I had the opportunity to converse with Jasmine last Tuesday briefly, and the conversation basically said what's needed is communication on all levels and different, different levels combined, which I think is true. And that was, that was the basics of our conversation.
All right. Member Shay.
I've met with Dr. Valar a couple of times. I reached out to Steve Kelly. I've sent him a copy of the DESI report. He hasn't gotten back to me yet, but I thought he was somebody who was new on the committee and probably would benefit from having some updates on what we were looking to do. I also was with the chair and the vice chair when they met with Department of Education. I also was with the chair and the vice chair when they met with Department of Ed. I thought that was a very, very good meeting. We're going to be working on this, on basically the first page of the DESE report for, between now and December, and it's going to require some training on our part. Juan said he would work with the Massachusetts Association of School Committee to get training, and he himself would be doing some of the training and some of the facilitation. Mr. Lazo and Mr. Jovan were very helpful in indicating that they would support us in any way that they could. Thank you.
All right. I have also reached out to, I also spoke with Council Chairman Lazo, and I do look forward to working with him and him following up with me in regards to kind of how we can put heads together and continue to move the school committee forward in manners of ensuring that our parliamentary procedure is proper. I have some experience with it, being a member of Head Start and Early Head Start's Policy Council for three years as Vice Chair, where I have operated meetings before, as well as former chairman of the school committee previously. So I just look for any, forward to any insight that he may also have. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be October 8th, Tuesday, October 8th at 7:00 PM in council chambers. And we also will have that joint meeting on October 28th, where we will receive the facilities, that facilities presentation. Dr. Valar is well aware, we talked during, I believe it was 2020, about how we can continue to move forward with the Massachusetts School Building Authority to try to ensure that our public school buildings are going to provide the best capable space for learning for our students. Given that all of our schools are pretty much older than World War II, other than the middle high school, it's definitively, I vehemently stand behind you in that we need to do work, and we need to do work about two or three, five, 10, 20 years ago. So, I'm with you there. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All of those in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous of all present. This meeting is adjourned.